We're gonna go.
So there we go. All right. Welcome to the January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five Board of Alderman Meeting. I now call this meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would ask the city clerk to call the board for attendance.
Alderman Allen?
Here.
Alderman Harder?
Here.
Alderman Hughes?
Here.
Alderman Kinsella?
Here.
Alderman Schwer?
Here.
Alderman Steinhebel?
Here.
And Alderman Weisehan?
Here.
I have Alderman Murphy as absent, Mary is presiding him, we do have a quorum.
Before we get to the minutes, just a couple of quick comments. I do want to thank Alderman Allen for filling in my absence last week. While Rick Porshi did a wonderful job, so thank you very much. And at her urging, I was actually at the inaugural ball at Jeff City last Monday evening. It was quite, it's always fun to see democracy in action. And it's not really a ball as much as all your reps and all your senators are there in their office. I mean, you had a chance to go and visit with pretty much all of your elected representatives. It was a really pleasant festive evening. I'm glad I did that. My other comment is we have two members of planning and zoning who are coming off of that. And Sheila Moncel and Fred Malin Smith, both of whom have worked tirelessly in the interest of the city for a number of years. And so obviously we will want to give them my thanks for the long term service. And thanks to all of our citizens who volunteered to be on commissions and serve the city in that way. It's really the city couldn't run it without that kind of help. Certainly, the city will be sending them both a certificate of appreciation for their long time, long time of service. I would say next, let's take a look at the minutes from the January thirteenth meeting and seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Second. Okay. Any discussion or amendment?
Please. Thank you, Mayor. One other, one item that came up during the last meeting, which is the conclusion of the minutes, was a discussion about the savings, which will also come up later this evening.
Right, right.
Regarding using West County EMS and Fire District. And paying for them to pass through, having the city made that document itself. And I asked Mr. Shelton to determine how much of the difference, the price difference was there by having gone that direction. And he responded with ten thousand three hundred twenty dollars in savings. So I just want to make note that that part of the question is within the minutes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other discussion about the minutes? All in terms of approving, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
And then one opposed? That motion carried. Good news, we've got a couple of citizens who want to speak, which is great. First is Mr. Pete Eggerberg, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Pete Eggerberg. I live at one three two two four Clayton Road. We're right across the street from the back entrance to Principia. I have a few remarks this evening, and I also received some comments from our neighbors that lived down behind in Grassley Bridge. Some of those pertain to potential alignment of the rear entrance to Bryn with Takara. There are some safety concerns there. I give notes to Ashley and she'll put those in the records. And you guys can look at that for what it's worth. Randy Beeseck, my neighbor immediately to the east to one three two one six Clayton Road. And I are both in favor of closing that west entrance if it's at all possible. There's an enormous amount of traffic that comes out of there and goes in there at night with all the different functions. I will say, when the new field house was under construction, Jim Curry, the foreman there, was kind enough to take us on a tour of the field house. And that facility is like the opening to Jurassic Park. No expense was spared. It is absolutely magnificent. It really is. There's nothing better anywhere in the state from what I've heard. We have a friend who started to play field hockey there, and it's a terrific facility. So thanks Bryn for building stuff that is so good. And I hope we can find a satisfactory solution to the traffic that it's generating here. Bryn has been a great neighbor over the years. And I'm hopeful we can find a way to make everybody happy here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And our second speaker is Mr. Michael Sawyer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Michael Sawyer. I live at seven three four Willa Spring Hill Court in Cedar Springs subdivision. I've been a resident here in Town and Country for over twenty years. And for the last several years, I've been a member of the Ways and Means Commission. And I filed for the open seat in Ward Four for Alderman and am a candidate. And I wanted to introduce myself to you folks. And some of you I know already, but not everyone, I want you to see my face and know my interests. I've been a proud resident of Town and Country and look forward to working with you in the future. And if any of you here work for, I appreciate your support. Thanks very much.
Thank you for taking the time. Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Moving along, next there's a couple of public hearings. The first one is a public hearing to review a request by Jason Martinez of Oasis Pools on behalf of Brian Armino, owner, for approval of a conditional use permit for a pavilion at one two zero zero one Wiltshire Place Court in the suburban east, the suburban estates only district. I now declare the public hearing open. I would ask the city clerk to enter exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on January ninth, twenty twenty five. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of hearing posted at the municipal center on the city's website, sent via notify me, posted on the subject property, and mailed to property owners within three hundred feet of that property with a list of those property owners attached. And exhibit number three is bill number twenty five oh four.
Thank you very much. I would invite Mr. Martinez, the Orange Representative, to the podium to answer his questions. And what I will do is I'll first open it to the members of the board and then to the public.
I'm actually Brian, the owner.
Oh, well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. And if anyone on the board have any questions, or Mrs. Alderman Kinsella?
Yes, Mrs. Armino, I saw I had a chance in the P S E.
Yes, I remember. Nice to see you again.
Plans you had for your backyard are gorgeous. I was curious, though, you mentioned that at that meeting, if we're gonna check and see if your next door neighbor.
And they've been okay with it. The rent, we put it out to all of the neighbors, and they were great, great with it.
Are there any members of the public that wish to comment on that? I now declare the public hearing closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The second one is a public hearing to consider zoning code amendments related to the regulation of permitted encroachments into building setbacks, specifically section four oh five dot three four five supplemental regulations. I now declare the public hearing open. I would ask the city clerk to enter exhibits.
Exhibit number one is affidavit of publication of notice of hearing, published in the St. Louis County on January ninth, twenty twenty five. Exhibit number two is typewritten notice of hearing posted at the municipal center on the city's website and sent via notify me. And exhibit number three is bill number twenty five oh five.
Thank you. I would invite our city planner, Mr. Spencer, to the podium to answer his questions. And we'll open it up to the board initially if they have any questions or discussion for Mr. Spencer. And we'll open it up if any members of the public would like to comment, sort of way.
Al Diver, one three four eight two Mason Village Court. I have a question about, one of the items, I think is the last one talks about patios. Patios being able to be close to the, to the border of the property. And, but I also saw in there, it seemed to only refer to patios of houses, not of businesses. Is that true? Coran? Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I guess I should ask you.
So if I, if I could just give a brief overview of how we got here.
Please.
The city administrator asked staff to investigate experiences that have been consistently proved over the past few years. Staff identified a number of situations involving pool equipment, standby generators, which are much more popular these days, and front porches. And Town and Country is one of the few cities in St. Louis County that doesn't speak to any of those as permitted encroachments. Almost all cities allow these types of structures to encroach. So staff worked with planning and zoning and commission to develop some regulations to allow these structures to encroach. So the first is for standby generators, HVAC units. They can encroach as close as twenty feet to a side of the front property line. Mechanic equipment associated with the swimming pool can encroach as close as twenty feet to a side property line. And then unenclosed porches, not more than one story in height, not more than fifty percent of the front facade. And on an existing house, and that includes a paved terrace, which was mentioned, can encroach up to ten feet into the front setback, which is across the board, the standard in St. Louis County and across the country, to be honest. So that's what that's referring to, the paved terrace on the front of the house. And this, this only applies to our, basically our residential properties that are impacted.
And if I could just comment, as someone who sits on the P S E board, we've had some pretty torturous meetings over things that are like a foot this way or a foot that way that have. So this type of amendments that make sense in the law for things like those home generators that people have in case the power goes out. I'm thrilled that we're doing this, frankly. I think that it sets to rest a lot of, I don't want to say needless discussion, that's probably a little harsh. But I think they're, I think adding a little more tolerance for things in these, in these, it's quite an improvement. I'm worried to say a lot of, a lot of words spent in over tiny issues, frankly.
These are very straightforward events that take benefit of the residents. These aren't frivolous types of structures. Standby generator has a purpose. We have folks that want to cover their front door because of weather. They can't because of the house exists at a setback where it was built fifty years ago. This will allow them to do that without having to jump through a bunch of hoops.
I think you and your party have done a great job with this. I mean, I think it's really a good step forward in terms of making life simpler, but still holding the standards of the city. So I think great job, in my opinion. Thank you. I now declare this public hearing closed. I have no appointments to announce. I will recognize the board's opportunity to provide reports if they wish. Alderman Hughes?
Thank you, Mayor. The next meeting of the Architecture Review Board is scheduled for Monday, February the third, five thirty here at the municipal center. All are welcome.
Thank you very much. I was talking actually to one of the members of your, of your board, and they're very happy with how you're running that board.
Oh, thank you.
Alderman Allen, I think you were second.
Thank you, Mayor. The task force for the tribute for the veterans and first responders is planning to have a meeting noon this Wednesday at twenty nine. We are at the point of hoping, needing to acquire the pledges, the funding from pledges, so we can come back to the board in the next month or so, next few meetings with a building contract. Thank you.
Good. Actually, I think that Do Som, Kelly Hancock have a radio show. I think sometime in February, I'm gonna be on that to discuss that. So look over that. Alderman Weisehan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to report from the police party EMS commission last week. Their productive reading, she both gave a recap of twenty twenty four and the achievements of the department, as well as looking forward to twenty twenty five. I think there's a lot of good things coming up. And also wanted to acknowledge the work due to Sergeant Doll, Officer Lanny, and Officer Down for their work. They were acknowledged last week as well.
Thank you. And we have, honestly, I think at least four second to announce. I very appreciate in terms of our fire and police. Mr. Shelton, do you have a report?
No report.
Good. Next, unfinished business. Bill number twenty five dash vote one sponsored by Alderman's Apple and Mercury. Without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the bill a second time?
Bill number twenty five oh one is an ordinance approving an amended final site development plan with conditions to be complied with for the development known as West Hills Community Church, located at one three two five zero South Outer Forty Road in the city of Town and Country, and authorizing certification of the amended final site development plan.
Thank you. I seek a motion and second to approve. So, second. Thank you. Any discussion or amendment? I would ask the city clerk for a roll call.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Kinsella?
Aye.
Alderman Harder?
Aye.
Alderman Steinhebel?
Aye.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And Alderman Schwer?
Aye.
That bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number four six seven four.
Next is a bill number twenty five dash oh two sponsored by the board as a whole. Without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the second time?
Bill number twenty five oh two is an ordinance authorizing a user agreement between the city of Town and Country and St. Louis County, acting on behalf of the St. Louis County Emergency Communications Commission regarding subscriber radios and the interoperable radio system.
I seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or amendment? I would ask the city clerk for a roll call.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
Alderman Harder?
Aye.
Alderman Schwer?
Aye.
Alderman Steinhebel?
Aye.
Alderman Kinsella?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
And Alderman Allen?
Aye.
That bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number four six seven five.
Thank you. Next, bill number twenty five dash oh three sponsored by the board as a whole. Without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the second time?
Bill number twenty five oh three is an ordinance amending the twenty twenty five budget by increasing a general fund expenditure account for pass-through payment for dispatch services to West County EMS and Fire, and appropriating funds to cover the increase.
That was the ten thousand three that we were discussing. I would seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other further discussion? I would ask the city clerk for a roll call.
Alderman Kinsella?
Aye.
Alderman Allen?
Aye.
Alderman Steinhebel?
Aye.
Alderman Harder?
Aye.
Alderman Hughes?
Aye.
Alderman Weisehan?
Aye.
And Alderman Schwer?
Aye.
That bill passes unanimously and becomes ordinance number four six seven six.
Under new business, first is bill number twenty five dash oh four. I would ask, I seek sponsors for voting, perhaps Alderman Hughes and Schwer. And without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the second time?
Bill number twenty five oh four is an ordinance approving a conditional use and authorizing a conditional use permit for an accessory structure, a pavilion located at one two zero zero one Wiltshire Place Court in the city of Town and Country.
Bill number twenty five dash oh four is continued to the meeting on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty four, for the second reading and consideration. Next, bill number twenty five dash oh five sponsored by the board as a whole. Without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the first time?
Bill number twenty five oh five is an ordinance amending Title Four, Chapter four oh five, the zoning regulations of the municipal code, specifically by the amendment of section four oh five point three four five supplemental regulations regarding the regulation of permitted encroachments into building setbacks.
Bill number twenty five dash oh five is continued to the meeting on Monday, February tenth, twenty twenty four, for the second reading and consideration. Next is approval of purchase order to Landmark Dodge for three Dodge Durangle police vehicles in the amount of one hundred thirty two thousand nine hundred seventy nine dollars. Seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Alderman Weisehan?
I just wanted to say this, this went through police party mess last week. That's support from the commission. And then this is again, just kind of carryover from the COVID time of the, the backup of inventory. So it's a catch-up on some vehicles.
Thank you. Any other discussion? On this week, do you have a voice? Vote. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed? Seek a motion to carry. Next is bill number twenty five dash oh six. An ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing agreement with two ALPA contracting for the Sun Rail Drain Channel Stabilization Project, page three, first reading. I think it'll be sponsored by Alderman Kinsella. Actually, since I've already read it, I will ask you to read it. But, so I will just, let's say it's continued to the meeting on Monday, February tenth, for the second reading and consideration. Next is approval of solid waste haul licenses.
Yes, oh, yeah, sorry.
I mean, this is for Ryan or Michael, and I'm still confused. When do we, as a city, do water projects on private property and when do we do not? When do we do not? When? Whatever. You know what I mean, Michael. And do they have money in this? Because the homeowners also contribute to this project.
Just real quick, great pleasure to take over, but in one of our retreats and things, we really discussed this in detail. And I think the city has made the decision in terms of, because we got an infinite number of projects. And I think the city is now taking the approach that, yes, individual subdivisions are going to have skin in the game, and that the projects that we are going to feature moving forward can benefit of the largest number of people as opposed to, say, one or two houses. There are some that have been in the system for a while and had certain phases done, and we really do need to finish them. But that is basically the direction the city is going for. Take it over, Michael.
Oh, I haven't come to that to the mayor's, you know, you don't mind, Mayor. We should put that on our website somewhere, because people ask me that all the time. Like, what is our, yeah, so as much as we do.
Yeah, okay, right.
Our stormwater program is on the website, sir. It is. And when, when we do it, what we tell them, what percentage of the private property owners' money needs to go in? Well, there's a form. I don't know how much detail is on there. I'll have to check on that. Okay, thanks, Michael. Yes. And this is one of two projects, as the mayor said. This, this project started in twenty twenty, and we have one other project, which is virtually designed already. Public Works Commission has asked that we complete those projects before we start on our update to the stormwater program. So this is one of those two projects. These folks are suffering from severe erosion due to a creek channel. So this is one of those that we feel is, is all needs to be done.
But I think it's a great point, but we've discussed it in years gone by. The focus now is, because it's an ordinance on application, and it's a lot of dollars. And so I think we're getting much more focused on doing things that help the most amount of people and having those individual subdivisions have some skin in the game, for sure.
Yeah, I agree. I just.
No, it's a great point.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Michael.
Moving on to approval of solid waste haul licenses for American Eco Gateway Disposal Republic Services Waste Management. And I think our newest entries are all good. I seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion or amendment on that? Alderman Weisehan?
Just a quick, quick comment I was thinking about as this is coming up. Do we see a lot more hauling companies coming in? Like, do you envision that? I mean, I know we're adding hard hauling. I'm just thinking of, yeah, that's, even if somebody might only be coming one time a week, it's another truck coming through all of our streets, impacting the streets, and doing, just wearing them out faster. Is there a limit to how many hoppers we would normally have?
At this time, there is no limit in the code, no sir.
Okay. I mean, do you see an issue continuing to have more haulers for the impact? I mean, if you had all five going through one street in a week as opposed to one company going through, that's a lot more impact on us.
I would agree with you. Not all of these surface all areas of the city. So.
And I could ask, Michael, what percent of the business does waste management have?
I believe it's around seventy percent.
I would, and I think that drives, might even be eighty. I'm not sure.
It might be closer.
My feeling is that over time, it's not going to be economically feasible for five other companies to try to get that thirty percent. And I think the issue will take care of itself. And it's like, hey, we've only got to handle it. It's not worth that. So I'm hopeful, but you make a good point, but I think the, just the market will take care of that.
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, I guess it's just even if there's one truck, you have one house on a street that has one of the providers, that trucks moving on through the same way that waste management has seventy percent. You know, the shield driving around.
Oh, absolutely. I just think for one house, the company's analyzing, this isn't worth it for us.
Often subdivisions take the lead in how many haulers they want in their subdivision. Many subdivisions require all homeowners to use the same hauler.
Okay, so. Good question. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I don't know. For instance, Mike, if we were trying as a city to just go with one hauler, like, get off great rate.
I bet the score even on that one I brought it up, so not by anybody here.
Yeah, okay.
And then that we're stacked in competition, we don't get a good price. I'm just saying there's other viewpoints out there that I'm painfully aware of.
We'd like to give our residents choices. That's great, but I agree with Fritz. I don't like all the trucks going down our street either. We only have two, so we don't have two services, but I don't like it as well, because one, they're baying. One, they do it at ours, we're in early morning street. So families are either driving their kids to school, or kids are walking to the school bus, playing by school together. That truck is barely down, and there's not a sale. Secondly, I mean, I've lived in other suburbs, and I know we have surrounding suburbs that only have one service. And that was always proposed to me, that was because they were a little bit bitter to get the entire community's service. And I agree with you, choices, but maybe we should limit it to two. So who should look into that, Michael? Probably all the questions, I mean, can we look at that?
Maybe we could at least get, say, a breakdown by percentage of what these other companies get overall. High truck, a hundred percent, seventy year, fifteen, ten, whatever. And then maybe we get a couple of them that got one or two percent, we might just say, see you.
Our attorney, O'Keefe, reminded me, I think it's state statute now, that you would have to give a two-year notice to those haulers if you're going to terminate. Not that we contract them. Two years. But I do know that there are certain areas of the community, and Alderman Murphy's not here, who's had a difficulty finding a particular hauler for their area. So back in the day, one hauler may have said, sure, I can do the whole city. That's become more and more challenging. So.
I just want to report too, my street didn't work for two weeks because of, for whatever reason, we didn't get any pickup during that snow. Any other discussion or amendment? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And the opposed? Bill number twenty five oh seven. I would, I seek the sponsors for voting, maybe Alderman Kinsella would be the right one. Without objection, will the city clerk redevelop the second time? Without objection, will the city clerk read the bill for the first time?
Bill number 2507 is an ordinance approving the fourth amended final site development plan with conditions to be complied with for the Principia, located at 13201 Clayton Road in the city of Town and Country, and authorizing certification of the fourth amended final site development plan.
Am I correct, Mr. Sheldon? Uh, bill number 2507 is continued to the meeting on Monday, February 10th, 2024, for the second reading and consideration.
Mayor?
Yes, Mayor.
May I ask if, um, the board as a whole would like to sponsor that amended final site development plan for the Principia?
I will open it up. Anyone on the board in that one, I saw you there. Board as a whole.
Okay, thank you.
The warrant list is the amount of $340,369.
I'm sorry, I think it's, sorry.
Go ahead.
A couple of questions, Pete. I also got a call from Randy Eustine. Eustine, one of your neighbors to the east, who also had that same concern. So just wanted you to know that, but how far along are we with, um, the, um, which does this, um, planning and zoning? Like, it's, because there were questions about who did the traffic study? When was the traffic study, um?
So if I could, real quick, where, right, so planning, zoning did recommend, and this is under your first reading, so I think at second reading, you would want to maybe, if there's some questions you want them to address at second reading, we would ask Principia to come forward at your second reading, but you may have certain questions you want them on notice to address.
I already recommend bringing my first line, uh, P and Z, Pasadena, obviously.
Eight to zero.
That's what I thought.
They did.
Yeah.
And the traffic studies.
And there was, I think it was a very valid traffic study.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I, you know, I think the gentleman was open, but I just, I think there's concern with us. Who looked at it? What times are they looking at it? And also, but this is just my curiosity, have we, did anybody bring up putting in a light for them that you used at high-traffic times to ensure that people use that entrance and exit? I'm trying, honestly, the science might be great, but they're both heading down.
You're talking about a traffic signal?
Yeah.
Yeah, the traffic study addressed the traffic signal.
And what did they come back to say?
It wasn't warned.
Wasn't warned.
A traffic signal. That is a city.
We're, we're not traffic engineers.
Well, I think the park where they, at least the park where it's coming, right here, whether you're going west, there's gonna be a right turn lane. Uh, there's an entrance that would be that really.
Right, a tapering entrance.
You know, they, I know, and I'm sure Pete and anybody who lives by it can tell you, is for some reason, though, it's 35 miles per hour, no S G, going down that hill both ways, everybody seems to go 50, right to where they're gonna put that new entrance. I'm concerned. So, yeah, so I don't know if we can go back to planning and zoning with that, but I think we need to look at what the actual, the speeds going down there, the, it's just, it's an awkward, it, I get the sideline thing, but boy, I mean, you're coming down at a fast.
I would just ask Alderman Steinhebel if you could maybe generate the questions and if you want to supply them to Bob or myself, and we can get them to the applicant so that we can then address those questions.
I appreciate so much.
But I remember one of the advantages of what it is, the new one, is that it allows the, you can stack up a, a lot of cars when you're not going out, so they're not all on Clayton Road. In other words, before, where you're pulling in to other places, there's not a lot of places for the cars to go initially, because they're looking for parking and things. You got that whole drive all the way past the football field where you can stack cars. I think it will actually make the situation.
Right.
I really do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Good question. Uh, warrant list again is $340,369.91. I seek a motion and second to approve.
Second.
Any discussion or amendment on the warrant list? Alderman Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sheldon has some questions. Um, so just to remind people, so we have the two grants for East West Gateway, and those monies would be refunded.
If we do not receive the grant, correct.
Okay, and then we have, now on here, stop removals, and those are only in right-of-way.
Correct.
And not on any private property.
Not on the private property. These are in subdivision streets where the city has accepted maintenance of the streets, which includes those easements and sidewalk maintenance.
And sidewalks, so we have that cost for that. Okay, and then, uh, just to point out, the HVAC firehouse, 50% have, have we gotten to this?
So, correct. As part of our more recent agreement with the fire district, because of escalating cost for HVAC equipment and maintenance, we agreed they would pay the first $5,000. All expenses after that on an annual basis would be split 50/50 with the city and the fire district.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Hughes.
Thank you, Mayor. On page two, the vendor, John's Witcher Shop, I'm sorry, John's Cricher Shop. Um, I'm looking at the 74 deer were processed. Primarily, where were they taken from? What, like Ward four, Ward two, Ward?
Majority Ward two and four.
Two and four. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Have you not, Alderman Allen, sorry.
Yes, um, I asked Mr. Sheldon something under other.
Yes, I was gonna say, I have not announced one thing under other, but. All right.
Okay, thank you. Last week, um, or two weeks ago, our last meeting, uh, and this was following our wonderful snowstorm. And, uh, we did have some discussion about the, some of the plowing, the great jobs that our guys did on our city streets, but, uh, is areas with concern on MODOT, South Outer 40, entrances, ramps, and, uh, the county on, um, Mason. And I know you had phone call, but before you mentioned your phone call to, uh, Tom Blair to let everyone know, I would just like to say still, if you're in the right lane, South Outer 40, going east, you still have a pile of snow three weeks later that, not totally, but could partially obstruct that lane of traffic to merge onto Eastbound 40. And again, that's the intersection. I know you talked to Mr. Blair, and part of my question is, okay, who trumps whom? Uh, we have a county and a state intersection. Who has the final responsibility to make sure lanes of traffic are clear?
Typically, that would be MODOT when it's just on either side of the bridge, which I think is that area. I did inform both MODOT and the county just to try to deploy both resources on that particular situation, but I believe MODOT was responsive, and we did receive response from the county as well. I don't know.
And they will do better next time?
Well, they, they responded to some of our issues anyway, unbalanced, so.
I think that's something we should continue to look at, because it, I mean, they're still, I mean, and yeah, it's still cold, but, um, three weeks later, once, that will tell you what kind of pile of snow was there two weeks ago, or two and a half weeks ago.
Good, good point.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing else, I would have said, seek a motion and second to adjourn.
A move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.